Good evening, I'd like to call to order the December 4th meeting of the Groton Town Council. Mr. Clerk?
Those present are Mayor Granataski, Councillor Atwater, Councillor Baumgartner, Councillor Franco, Councillor Heed, Councillor Obree, Councillor Schmidt, and Councillor Zepiri. Councillor Parker is absent.
Councillor Parker is attending the TVCCA meeting in Norwich and she is on her way here. Okay, salute to the flag. Representative Richards, would you lead us in a salute to the flag, please?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are onto item three, recognitions, awards, and memorials. Do any councillors have any recognitions, awards, and remords? I just want to give a thanks to Parks and Rec. Mr. Locken did an excellent job with the holiday kickoff. We have three public hearings this evening. Mr. Carron?
Notice is hereby given that the Groton Town Council will hold three public hearings on Tuesday, December 4th, 2018 at 6:30 PM at the Town Hall Annex, Community Room 1, 134 Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut pursuant to resolutions adopted at its meeting held on November 7th, 2018 in accordance with Article 5 of the Groton Code of Ordinances, designation of scenic roads, and of the Groton Town Charter, Section 553 for Legislative Ordinances. Number one, to consider the alterations of Sandy Hollow Road to accommodate five new driveways of the Mystic Hollow re-subdivision. Number two, to consider installation of a driveway apron for the Bender property, 1201 River Road Mystic. And number three, to consider amending the Town of Groton Blight Ordinance, Number 281, Sections 2, A, G, H, L, C, 5, A, B, C, D, and 8. The complete resolutions for the alteration of Sandy Hollow Road and River Road and the draft amendments to the Blight Ordinance, Number 281, are available at the Town Clerk's office dated at Groton, Connecticut, this 27th day of November 2018. Betsy McCauser, Groton Town Clerk.
Thank you. So, we have three public hearings this evening and we have the first public hearing will open the -- Mr. Carron, are there people signed up to speak? It will open the first public hearing on item one at 6:34.
(Inaudible) a short presentation or anything?
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. If you could please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
So, do you know my name? FEDS, FEDS Engineering.
Could you please spell, I need to record.
FEDS, U.S.
FEDS, U.S., thank you.
G-R-A-G-G.
Thank you.
My office is FEDS Engineering LLC located at 70 Essex Street, Mystic, Connecticut.
Thank you.
Just going to take a second and set up the board here.
Thank you.
Try to place it so everyone can see.
I'm here representing SMS Associates LLC. It's an eight-and-a-half acre piece located on Sandy Hollow Road at the intersection of Pequot and Sandy Hollow. It bordered to the north by I-95 North. It's an undeveloped eight-and-a-half acre piece and we're looking to actually have subdivision approval from Planning Commission for six lot subdivision, four lots along Sandy Hollow Road, and two rear lots with a shared driveway coming off of Sandy Hollow Road. There's a wetland located to the east which prevents us from tying into High Street on that side. So, we're here before you tonight for -- because Sandy Hollow Road is a scenic road or has a scenic road designation. I blew up the four lots, the four lots and the shared driveway along Sandy Hollow Road to show you what work is being done within the right-of-way and what trees we are preserving and what trees we are adding. And also to show the four single driveways and one shared driveway further east to access the two rear lots. There's a stone wall that runs along Sandy Hollow Road basically on the boundary or on the property line or the right-of-way line. So, we're proposing to remove the stones, the boulders, stones for access to each of the driveways. And we are also proposing to kind of supplement what's there with those extra stones and/or create like a little turn-in. So, to keep the stones on-site, we're not getting rid of them. Also, all the trees that are kind of rendered in a green color were trees that will remain. We did have to take a few trees down at each of the driveways as well as to provide sightlines up and down Sandy Hollow Road. On the easternmost portion of the property, we have a driveway. We had some sightlines that were a little bit -- we needed to take down more trees, so we did supplement there per the subdivision regulations with two additional trees that we'll be planting. I think that's basically it unless there's any questions. We tried to, you know, avoid -- we're keeping as many of the trees as possible along the frontage, close even on our property, as close as we, you know, as much as we could to keep kind of the scenic, you know, keep it in kind with the balance of Sandy Hollow Road heading east is developed in a very similar manner. There's a stop sign at Pequot Avenue, three-way stop, so although I'll meet the sightline stuff, the sightline distances, there is a stop sign there kind of keeping traffic at a minimum.
Thank you. Keeping in mind that we are not voting this evening, this is just a public hearing. We do have another gentleman signed up to speak, but did you have questions for this presenter? Councillors Perry?
If I gather correctly, that you're not going to encroach on or change the highway in any way, Sandy Hollow Road, that is?
Oh, we are not touching the highway, the roadwork, yes.
And the entirety of your work consists in making openings in the wall for driveway access, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you're going to put in some trees and you're going to take out some trees?
That's correct.
Are you putting in as many trees as you're taking out?
Uh, no. We are putting in, there's a requirement, I think it's a street tree every 50 feet. So, we are removing a few more trees than we are taking out, but it's pretty heavily wooded there.
That's the only question I have.
Thank you, Councillor Perry. Councillor Atwater?
Looking at the drawing of the map, it seems as though Pequot Road comes out almost into somebody's driveway. Have you considered, combined as you did with the lots in back of doing a shared driveway, have you considered sharing the driveways for the four houses so you only end up with two curb cuts instead of four?
Uh, we did consider that, but what happens is it forces two of the houses to be closer together because you can't get the turnaround. So, the two here, instead of kind of having an evenly spaced yard, it would force these two together. It would actually push the houses a little further back from the street and also increase the driveway size. So, we kind of looked at that. We felt that the shared driveway for the -- this makes sense because the houses are pretty far off the road. But when you're kind of limited with the zone that's out there and you're limited in the width, it just, we looked, we did look at it. We felt the impervious, the additional driveway pavement and the positioning of the houses would not be in keeping with what's out there on the scenic road. So, we did look at it. You know, we, the staff had brought it up. You know, we looked pretty hard at it and just felt that it was, the benefits, although it kind of seems like a good idea, definitely is a great idea for back here. But when you start to do it on narrow lots and we have septic systems that need to go in the rear, it just, it pushed the houses back further and increased the impervious.
I appreciate what you're saying. I'm having a hard time understanding why it increases the impervious service. And I also understand you have no choice but to do the shared driveway for the ones in back because otherwise you wouldn't have those in back. And I just, again, it just seems to me as though combining the two would make more sense, but thank you.
Well, I do, I mean, I do have an exhibit if that would help clarify the shared driveway issue, if that's helpful.
Would you like to see it?
I do not, I don't need to see it now, but I--
Okay. Perhaps when, on the evening when we're going to be voting, would that be?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other councillors? If not, I'll go to the public. Councillor Obree?
Are these lots pretty similar in size to the ones that are already on Sandy Hollow Road?
Yes, the four frontage lots are very similar in size. Majority of them are about this size. There's maybe one or two that are a little bit smaller and one or two that are a little bit bigger. The two lots in the rear are much bigger than the balance of the lots on that street.
And do you have any plans for the land that runs behind the existing housing?
Uh, no, uh, no. Let me, that's, most of that's open space. So, that was, let's see, all of this area here that fronts on High Street, there's a wetland down in the corner here, all of that is being dedicated to the town. It's open space.
The shared driveway, though, goes back and there are two houses that sit behind the existing houses, correct?
Yes.
It was on the other side?
Yeah.
Flipped over.
So, everything on, it's actually on the next, the match sheet, sheet four, but it's the balance, most of the balance of that is open space. So, the shared driveway comes in and services a house as shown.
Who's actually going to own the driveway?
Uh, it's actually owned by Lot 5 and cross-access easement to Lot 6. Lot 6 actually has frontage on High Street, but we felt we could not get a driveway off of lots, off of High Street because of the wetlands.
When you build and the houses are sold, do you plan to have an agreement in place for all that driveway?
Yes, we have an agreement drafted. Town, the planning, develop, the plant of, staff will look at it and if need be, we'll go to their attorney and everything will get a--
Yeah.
There's, yes. Short answer is yes. Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councillor Franco?
Can you clarify, did you say you've had permit to build there already?
We have wetlands approval and we have Planning Commission subdivision approval.
And have you talked to zoning about coming in from High Street or are you just assuming you will not?
Oh, no. We had long, well, we didn't have long discussions. They said there's no way you're going to get a wetlands permit to come off of High Street.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so then we will go to James Sheard, please.
Thank you. Thank you and good evening. My name is James Sheard, S-H-E-R-R-A-D. I'm here tonight to speak against this scenic road modification for driveways. My address is 66 Algonquin Drive in Mystic. I've made a statement that I've distributed ahead of time, so that I'm just going to try to paraphrase from this. I'm presenting this statement as a citizen of the town. Part of the reason I'm presenting this is I was the chair of the Planning Commission back when this scenic road designation was made by an earlier town council. There is quite a bit of documentation and action that must take place in order for a scenic road to be designated. A little primer on this, there are three sections that go back to the zoning regulations, Chapter 13.5, Article 5. One section talks about the outline for the six criteria necessary to have a scenic road. The next section talks about procedures for obtaining official approval for that. And then the final section talks about alterations to an established scenic road. If the landowners of a town accepted a road, determine that they meet the criteria noted above, they can petition the town council to request that formal designation. That petition must be signed by a majority of the landowners on that road. This request is then sent to the town council and then to the Planning Commission for review and comment. The Planning Commission had this topic as part of a regular agenda meeting and this topic was discussed at length with landowners that came in to discuss this with us. The landowners were reminded that if the road was designated as a scenic road, they would have their property encumbered by restrictions such as driveway improvements, taking out trees, et cetera. Any of those actions would require a public hearing, so those lands are encumbered. There were no negative concerns voiced by any of the landowners. Since the road fully met all the requirements for scenic road designation and the petition was proper, the Planning Commission unanimously approved this recommendation for scenic road designation, sent it to the town council, and the town council approved it. I might mention, there were two scenic road designations for Sandy Hollow. There was one from the east, which went from Allen Street to Woodus, well, not Woodus, where it's Commeres. And there was the one that we're talking about tonight. There were two separate scenic road designations. Both were approved at the same time. Going forward, the town council is now the steward of this town's scenic road. It is your duty to maintain and preserve designated scenic roads as cited in the regulations. Scenic roads are an asset to this town. This has come out in any number of public hearings to support the plan of conservation and development. Not all property is developed. There are constraints due to wetlands, rock outcroppings, steep inclines, easements, et cetera. There is, so, having a scenic road is in fact a constraint on the properties that abut that road. The town council can only act if there is good cause to change or modify scenic roads. There is no good cause for this request. This request to permit five driveways along the length of this scenic road before you would destroy the scenic road. I strongly urge you to embrace your stewardship role and deny this request. Otherwise, you're approving the destruction of this town-exempt road and I would request, since you're not voting tonight, that you go out and ride along that road. Look at it now and then think about what would happen if you allowed us. I thank you for your consideration and your attention. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Sheard, did you leave a copy of your letter with the clerk?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the Sandy Hollow Road public hearing? Please come forward and state your name and address. Thank you, Jesse.
Good evening, Kate Richards, 78 Algonquin Drive. I'm coming to speak because this is an area I drive past way too many times a day, every day. I live right down the street off of Pequot Avenue. I turn onto this road at that stop sign all of the time. And I am appreciative of actions that bring positive developments to the town, but I do have some concerns about this particular area because of the wetlands designation and also the disruption to the ecosystem and the animals that are in the area. We have flocks of turkeys, we have bobcats, we have foxes, we have all kinds of animals coming in and out of our neighborhoods where we are now. And without that wooded area, I'm worried about how that would increase and what would happen and if these animals are going across Sandy Hollow more often, what could be the effect of that for the animals and for the cars and the people that are traveling in those areas as well. So, I wanted to bring up those concerns. And also, we have those three stop signs now at that intersection. It used to be just the stop sign at the end of Pequot and fairly recently, the other two were put in on Sandy Hollow. A lot of people who are going straight through on Sandy Hollow don't actually stop at those stop signs. So, I am also concerned about what the effect would be of having four, actually five, more driveways right along that, people coming in and out and not necessarily the traffic paying very good attention to what's happening in that particular area on the street. So, I just wanted you to hear those concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on Sandy Hollow Road?
Do I need a sign?
I can write it down if you state your name and address, please.
Joe Masternunzio. I'm the general manager of SMS Associates and we are developers of the property.
I need an address, sir, please.
Our address is 163 Boston Post Road, Waterford.
Thank you.
I'm here to speak, obviously, in favor of this, these proposed modifications. And I'd like to just read for the public what the criteria is for the designation of a scenic road. And this is Section 13.5 to Section 1.22. And it states, "The council shall consider designated scenic road only those town roads which are free of intensive commercial development and intensive vehicular traffic and meet at least one of the following criteria. One, it's unpaved. Two, it's bordered by mature trees and stone walls. Three, the travel portion is no more than 20 feet in width. Four, it offers scenic views. Five, it blends naturally into the surrounding terrain. And six, it parallels or crosses over brooks, streams, lakes, and ponds." Well, when you start looking at the definition of a scenic road, item one doesn't apply. It's a paved road, it's not unpaved. Item two does apply. It's bordered by mature trees and stone walls. Number three does not apply. It's a travel portion is no more than 20 feet in width. Number four is pretty subjective. It says it offers scenic views. That's very subjective by whoever drives by there. Number five, it blends naturally with surrounding terrain, which our proposed subdivision does. And number six does not apply because it doesn't cross over brooks, streams, lakes, or ponds. So, when we, when we put forth our application for the subdivision, we had to go through the normal wetlands and conservation process. And the commission took into consideration the impact or lack thereof on the wetlands. There is no impact. When we went through the planning and zoning regulations and application, the zoning commission took into consideration the existing neighborhood. If I can call your attention to this outline of the actual property, there's a question on how do these lots compare with the existing lots in that neighborhood. These are all the existing lots along the northeast side of Sandy Hollow. And you can see the proposed lots, all are the exact same size, approximately 20,000 square feet. Whereas, these two rear lots are going to be considerably larger. They're going, Lot 5 would be 1.67 acres and Lot 6 would be 2.2 acres. So--
Mr. Excuse me, Mr. Masternunzio, could you please grab the mic? It's, we can hear you fine here, but we're being videotaped, please. Thank you, sir.
Okay, no problem. Would you like me to repeat that?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, if we're looking at the existing neighborhood, which is part of the whole scenic road designation, you have single-family individual homes on approximately 20,000-square-foot lots. Each of them are served by a single driveway. Each of them have a stone wall and trees in front of them. What we're proposing is exactly what's there. So, in our opinion, and I think it's proved out by the Conservation Commission approval and by the planning and zoning approval, that this is absolutely in keeping with what the primary designation of this scenic road is. So, while you're allowed as a council to review and approve the proposed improvements, I don't think the intention, contrary to what Mr. Sheard had already brought up, is to prevent the development of land. This is in keeping with that scenic road. And one might argue that if the scenic road is right here, there is some commercial development already up here, which would pretty much throw out the whole reason why you had a scenic road in the first place. So, when you look at the commercial developments to the west of Sandy Hollow, I can't say that those would really be classified as scenic. The scenic road designation happens to be on this side of the, of the Sandy Hollow and it's represented by single-family homes with a single driveway, no shared driveways, other than the one we're proposing.
You have one minute, sir. You have one minute?
Pardon?
You have one minute remaining?
Okay. Okay. So, in keeping with that, I'd just like to state that every effort was made during the application process, each step of the way. And each of the commissions were well aware that this is a scenic road designation. And our approvals were granted unanimously by both the Conservation Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission. And there was a public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission and there was no opposition. So, I would ask the council to please consider giving us the approvals for the proposed improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
My name is Carl Strad. I live at 373 River Road in Mystic.
Thank you.
I am the trustee of the Priscilla A. Strand Family Trust, which is one of the owners of the property in question. I am also representing the Priscilla A. Strand Family Trust for property across the street on Sandy Hollow Road, which is undeveloped property. And I respectfully request that the council approve this designation. To not do this is really an unwarranted taking of four to six developable building lots along Sandy Hollow Road. The adjacent property to the west is the Mystic Medical Group doctor's office. To the east is only single-family homes on 20,000-square-foot lots, all with single driveways. I don't think it changes the character one bit to add four more driveways plus one shared driveway to the rear. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Strand. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the Sandy Hollow hearing?
My name is Susan Fish Eastman. I live at 450 Pequot Avenue. I am one of the 11 owners of this piece of property. It was purchased by the Fish family in the 1600s from the Burrows family. It was my grandfather's property. He died in 1958. It was deeded to his three sons. And then, after they passed away and didn't have anything to do-- And then, after they passed away and didn't have anything to do with dispersing the land, it now is into the hands of 11 people that own this piece of land. We are trying to find a way to sell the land so that we can just find a way to get it taken care of. So we are very happy that this group has come in and decided that they would like to plan some single-family homes. We are happy to see it being used. We think that it's in the best interest of the town with the open space and with the wetlands taken care of. I don't think it will impact the neighborhood at all. It's probably better than a commercial building that possibly could go in there. So we are, the 11 of us are approving this subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for Sandy Hollow hearing? Okay, seeing none, I will close the Sandy Hollow public hearing at 7:02. Okay. We have, thank you, sir. We have already read the calls for the public hearings at the beginning of the meeting. So at this point, we will move to Item 2 on the notice of public hearings, which is to consider the installation of driveway apron for the Bender property 1201 River Road in Mystic. And I will open the public hearing for Item Number 2 at 7:03. This is the River Road property. And I have, no one signed up to speak, but there's a gentleman here to do a presentation?
Yes.
I'll just need to get your name and address for the record, sir. Thank you.
My name's Asa Bender, property owner, 1201 River Road. All right. Just for, you know, some orientation, the property is just south of Old Mystic Town Center. If you're coming away from Old Mystic, this is 182.
Can you please, I'm sorry, can you please hold the microphone? Thank you, sir.
No problem. If you're coming away from Old Mystic, this is 182. This is Shuville Road, 182. River Road swings down. Just after you pass the pond on the right is my property. There's one house that was a postage stamp out of the corner. The rest of the property reaches back to Haley Brook. As you come along that road, if you guys want to drive it later, you'll notice that there's the first house, his cleared area is the very edge of the property. Then there are a couple of, you'd really have to stop and look to see them, a couple of old driveway entrances or drive and barn entry and road entry from what this used to be, which seems to have been some sort of agricultural field. They dug in a pond, it was probably cranberry, but that's just my guess. There had been a barn in that corner. Having to put the driveway up there, I had originally intended, and gotten a little preliminary, I tried to put it in here, which is where there had been a house, burned down sometime, there you go, after 2004, that's a 2004 aerial image. If you guys look on your copies, you can see it as a small building there. I had put in the outline of the older barn. The barn hasn't been there for at least 60 years. That was 1934 and '50 imagery. There had also been a network of roads. You can try to make them out in the rough overlay in the '34 imagery, but the resolution is just much lower there, so you really have to do some studying to figure that one out. The large blob in the middle of the '34 aerial imagery is the pond that they dug out for their agricultural purposes. The, you can see that I overlaid on the 2004 aerial imagery where it's still a little clear, the driveway entrances, the very north one was the entry to the old barn. Below that, there's a very wide entry that had been to some sort of cross-axis roads on that side of the pond that they dug. After that, going south, there's a stone wall that you can't see from the road, but it's an important stone wall, not for scenic purposes, because it retains the road for, at least from washout. I'm not sure that it's actually within a one-to-one slope, but there's a retaining wall holding back perhaps two or three feet of grade there. So we had to get on the north side of that, and the only reason we didn't go to the old house's parking lot apron, they didn't really have a driveway, it was just paved up to the road, was that when we went with that as a submittal, we got a review during the wetlands application, a comment from the town engineer saying, hey, how about you check sightline for that? We had figured since it was an existing driveway, it was safe, but no, it wasn't safe. So we moved away from the blind curve at the south side of the imagery. They wanted to be, basically cast the property to meet the road requirement, but, you know, we actually looked at the numbers, and the town engineer was very reasonable. So he's letting us put it where the existing outlets are. So we're matching an existing outlet, there's minimal grade change, any grade change is basically crowning the road. Right now, the plan is to put in a gravel driveway. We'll have to get re-review if we need, from wetlands, if we need to change that, at least beyond anything impermeable, to anything impermeable. So right now, it's intended as gravel driveway, and we tried to do what the town requires in terms of detailing at the edge, but there really isn't anything for a gravel driveway, apparently, in the town's blue book. So we're matching a small curb of concrete with a one-inch lip, which matches the curb detail for an actual concrete driveway for the town. And it provides what I think they're really looking for, which is a little gutter flow along the edge to prevent wash over the driveway and continued movement along the road. But other than that, you know, we're not adding paving. That winds up being, what, 12 square feet of new paved area within the right of way? And that's literally the run of a 12-inch concrete topping curve at grade. And the only reason you really need to do that, aside from creating that one-inch geometric change to stop the water flow, is because if you try to dig in anything next to the road, you really have to put in flowable concrete, flowable fill. Otherwise, you'll mess up the edge of the road, making your apron. There are zero stone walls affected, there are zero mature trees affected, and there's an area of gravel driveway for the 13 feet approaching of 158 square feet, but that's obviously permeable and open and really is in the same location as a previously existing gravel road. I did provide the details, but I'm not sure you guys have any interest in that. The only tree of real concern along this area, we are managing to, you know, look around there, so we don't need to take that down. Really, along that edge of the road, as you approach it from the north, it opens up into more or less a meadow. And that's all within the wetland setback zone, but, you know, we're trying to curve around it with as much geometry as we can, making that 90, and giving ourselves the 10 feet necessary to safely get onto the road, which, of course, safety is the paramount concern here. So the reason for this change, I guess, on a scenic road, is safety. We were required to move the driveway to meet minimum safe stopping distance requirements for oncoming traffic at the 25 mile an hour road. The road's declared at a 300-foot, it's not safe stopping distance, it's the sightline distance for a minor road intersection, which is what's used to govern, but that is, we're getting as close as we can to that. There are a lot of problems with tight corners and sharp vertical change on the road, and one of them is at the south corner of the property. There shouldn't be any other effects that should matter for scenic road designation, so I think that's it, unless you guys have any questions.
Tony, the councilors have questions? Counselor Franco?
I have diagrams, there's a box here that has the wording, and it's very small, and I can't read it. It says benchmark something.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry about the scale. I was trying to cobble this together as fast as I could. This is actually overlaid on the civil, so that's something that I just carried over. It's a little dark for that. But that's just a benchmark on an existing telephone pole. There's another one at another property corner, but they shouldn't matter to you.
Okay, I just couldn't read it, so I didn't know what it said.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Atwater?
I did drive this road a while ago, and you're very close to the end of the designation of a scenic road. Is it like 100 feet or so?
I actually don't know. Where does the scenic road designation?
Well, if you're coming from Old Mystic Village, there's a big sign or whatever that says scenic road, and then just beyond that is, I believe, is where your property is. And I just wondered how.
I know the sign, now that you're mentioning it. I know that you couldn't reasonably put up a sign any further along that road, because if you look at the imagery, the newer, clearer imagery, you can see that pond, Haley Pond, carves right in next to the road, I think possibly why it was called, well, why it was put there, anyway. But I'm not sure they could've got a sign up any further towards Mystic Center. But aside from that, I mean, yeah, it might be right near the edge, but I think that I'm meeting your requirements for scenic, so I wasn't too worried about it.
You are in the scenic road designation, but you're very close to not being in it, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, but I hadn't really, you know, looked to get around anything. I think that I'm leaving the road exactly as it was, best as I can, you know?
Thank you, sir. Are there any people in the seats that would like to address the River Road public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I will close the Bender property 1201 River Road public hearing at 7:13. And Mr. Bender, did you leave one of these for the clerk? So we are on to the third public hearing of the evening, and this is Item 3, to consider amending the Town of Groton Blight Ordinance, Number 281, and there's a litany of sections there. I will open this public hearing at 7:14, and I would ask Mr. Reiner to come up, please. He needed to ask for an amendment, I believe.
Good evening. John Reiner, Director of Planning, excuse me, Development Services. So we did receive comments from one person in writing, and they had brought up something dealing with some of the exemptions as they're listed within the proposed ordinance. In talking with the town's attorney, we had, he had recommended adding one additional section to the ordinance. So we're looking at, here we're talking about Section 5-3, blighted premises, Number 3 exemptions, adding a letter G. And this would, I'll just read it as he suggested it. Land and buildings directly associated with waste stream management and disposal, which operate and are under and in full compliance with validly issued state, federal, and local permits and approvals. Examples are a landfill, a transfer station, a publicly owned treatment works, a recycling facility, and a junkyard. This exemption excludes only those areas that actually contain waste or recyclable materials. Does not include separate land and buildings, such as offices, used in connection with such activities. There was some concern that we would have to apply both blight regulations to the town's transfer station or other properly operating activities that might not always look as sightly as a residential house lot should.
Could you give me that again, please, so I could note that on my copy? Or do you have copies of it? A copy, okay. And I was just wondering where it goes into the, did you say 3?
So letter G.
3G?
Under 3 exemptions.
Insert 3G exemptions, okay. And you have something that you will provide to the clerk?
Yes.
Thank you. Do you have questions for Mr. Reiner on the addition? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have, no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone present that would wish to speak on the blight ordinance amendment?
Me.
I was looking to, I was looking to see if anybody here was wanting to speak, but Counselor, over, go right ahead.
I just wanted to say, I was the one, I believe, that originally asked for this review of the blight ordinance. And I just want to say that I think that John Reiner made every effort to listen to what the concerns were that I had and others, and I think he's really done an outstanding job of trying to make it so that it's a little bit more powerful, and there will be a few more remedies in the future if people do have problems. And so I want to thank him for a very good job.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further comment, we will close the third public hearing at 7:17. Oops, sorry. All right, we are on to Item 5, receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. This is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, please sign the sheet on the table at the front of the meeting room. Thank you. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councilors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during the responses to citizens' petitions portion of the meeting. I have, no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone here who would like to speak under citizens' petitions? I believe Mr. Trejo, did he leave remarks for you, Mr. Carr?
Yes.
This is from Kevin Trejo, 536 L. Shenacast Road, Groton. It's in cursive, that's a pleasant change. Nobody writes in cursive. "I would like to remind the Groton voters that there is a special referendum on December 11, 2018. Purpose of said referendum is to amend the previous referendum, 2016, which stated to renovate like new, to build new. We can build two new elementary schools at Westside and Cutler, Cutler Middle School sites, instead of renovating like new. This will not change the cost previously approved. Building new let us finish construction 2021 instead of 2022. Building new gives us longer building life by approximately 20 years, making it cost efficient. So on Tuesday, December 11, 2018, please vote yes." Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. Thank you. Responses to citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Very good. Consent calendar. Counselor Baumgartner, please.
So be it resolved that the minutes of the town council meeting of November 7, 2018, are hereby accepted and approved?
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Head. Is there any discussion on the minutes? These begin on page 14 in your packet. Counselor Zepari?
Roman 05, citizens' petitions. Last, at that meeting, Portia Bordeland was concerned about the ballot that we have being in Spanish and having other language assistance in the, available to voters who don't use English as a first language. Have we done anything with that, or is that just something that she proposed and we did nothing in follow-up?
At this particular time, we're only considering the minutes and their accuracy, so we will address that under communications and reports. If you could hold- If you could hold that thought, and we could ask the manager then, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Parker.
Just a spelling error.
What page, please?
It would be page 15, which would be page one of our meeting minutes.
Mm-hmm.
And it says a quorum was declared, but declared is misspelled. Sorry.
Oh, I see it, okay. Needs an E.
Needs an E.
Anyone else on the minutes? So we normally move the consent calendar as one item, so Counselor Baumgartner, can you refresh my memory? Did you also move the special trust fund contributions, or did you just move the minutes?
I did not, and if you could hold one second.
We can, we can do it separate if you'd like, since we already have one motion on the floor.
All right, great.
Any more discussion on the minutes? All those in favor of the minutes of being approved for November 7th, 2018, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. Counselor Parker, do you want to move the special trust fund contributions, please?
I made a motion that accepts the contributions to special trust funds resolved that the council hereby accepts, and the contributions, do you want me to read them all, or as a whole?
I don't think it's necessary to read them all. Mr. Clerk, is it necessary to read all? Thank you.
Okay, I so move.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Franco. Any discussion on the trust fund contributions? I'd like to thank everyone who's making these very generous contributions. The Rotary Club, Captain Milburn, very nice. There's quite a list here for everyone to see. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, thank you. Communications and reports, town councilors. Counselor Baumgartner.
So I'm not sure if, I saw in the newspaper about earlier, earlier last week, the amazing work of Public Works, a group of about 11 Grosso Tech students, as well as John Byrd, the Connecticut, Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, came together and built a 450-square-foot rain garden adjacent to the human service, human services building parking lot that will intercept stormwater runoff coming from that parking lot, which will mean that the Paquonic, Paquonic River right next door will have fewer pollutants entering that waterway. And, you know, it's a really great garden. They're used nowadays to mitigate stormwater runoff in going into our storm drains and doing a great job of just clearing out pollutants, as I stated. So I hope to see more in town, and it's really great to see young people engaged on an important topic like this. So again, thank you, Grosso Tech, especially thank you to the Eastern, Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, which received the fund, the funds from a federal grant through the Long Island Sound's Futures Fund, which is funded by both the EPA and the National Fish and Wildlife Fund. So a lot of teamwork, and again, hope to see more gardens in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Baumgartner. Counselor Parker.
This evening was the TVCCA meeting. It was a combination because of last week's, or last month's meeting fell on a week of Thanksgiving, so that was a very good meeting this evening. And I attended the Fitch Robotics Club pancake breakfast and the holiday kickoff at the Senior Center instead of having the annual parade. And a couple of people, they really liked it, that since it was a nice, close-knit area and actually safer, just my opinion. But wonderful job, Jerry, and the Senior Center. Thank you.
Counselor Franco.
We had the beautification meeting yesterday, and we discussed a lot of topics, a lot of help. And I was excited to see the water garden in the newspaper and online and social media. Andre, I'm glad you chanted that. Thank you. I received correspondence from citizens regarding scenic road and also the December 11th referendum. And I also gave blood today, and there was a shortage, and they're looking for donors. And that's all I have to report.
Counselor Heath.
I met with the town manager, John Byrd, and Groton Housing Authority to sort of, we went through the process of how you replace the tenant representative. So it's a little bit of a convoluted process. There's a lot of legal jargon that goes behind it. But the short, the short result is that we have two nominees for the positions at our next personnel meeting. We'll interview the second person who we haven't spoken to yet, and then we will proceed from there to appoint somebody to the position. Then come July of next year, when that vacancy, when the term of that vacancy expires, we will, or we won't, the residents will be, they'll have the option to hold an election. So it's, it took about an hour to get through this, so I'm just giving you the 30-second overview of what happened. But our next meeting will resolve that vacancy.
Very good, thank you. Counselor Obray.
I also attended the beautification committee. Just a couple of things that we're doing on that. We're working on our vision statement. We're also working on our bylaws, and we have a new member, a new volunteer, Joan Smith, is going to be helping us out, which we're very happy about. We do have a Facebook page, so you can friend us, and things are moving along, but it will be a slow process. But anybody that might like to join us, I think our schedule is now going to be online on the Facebook page.
Yes, I think we can update that one for the full scheduling.
We're a small group, but everybody's working very hard. Everybody left with an assignment the other night. So that's what I've been up to.
Thank you. Counselor Atwater.
I attended the Children First Groton Council meeting this morning. I mean, that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Counselor Schmidt.
I did receive a call from the housing authority about the application that they have placed, and also about the tenant board member. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Zepari.
I just expressed concern about Portia Bordelain's presentation at our last meeting. It was deferred to this section, so if we can address the question, are we doing anything to modify ballots and give instruction to people who do not use English as a first language in the course of balloting?
So do you want to take this, or do you want to go to the clerk?
Well, you, go ahead.
Okay. I know that the town clerk, Betsy McCausier, had made arrangements to have the explanatory text translated into Spanish. That is available. In terms of the ballot, I would like to confirm that there is a Spanish-language ballot, I believe there is, for the referendum. But before I give you a definitive answer on that, I just want to confirm with her and the registrar of voters that that will be available on Tuesday.
I'm concerned about this referendum coming up, but I'm concerned about altering our practices going forward, so that perhaps the ballots be both in Spanish and English, and that there be assistance for people who speak other languages in some form. But I particularly, since we have such a high Spanish, Spanish-speaking population, I think we should be sure that they're included in the process by covering that language. I hope that will go forward and continue. It was the consensus of this, this council at the time that Portia's remarks were very constructive, and we were in favor of that. I just don't want it to fall, it was never a formal motion, and it was net, but it was a consensus that we should be moving in that direction.
Did you want to address anything, Mr. Byrd?
No, the town clerk jumped right on it within a day or two, getting that first draft in Spanish done. I think they, was she going to blow up one of those two explanatory texts and put on the wall, which talked to have a large blow up so people would spot it, too?
Yes.
I don't know if that's still the plan.
Yes.
Yeah, she jumped right on it.
Great, thank you. Sure, go ahead. About regarding that?
Well, so, I'm just, I'm just wondering if all the regular voting places are going to be open next week?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Just for clarification, folks.
So I'll start with that. So we have, we have an election again on December 11th, 6:00 AM until 8:00 PM, all your normal polling places. And this is the referendum regarding the school bond, and all the pertinent information is on the town website. And you are welcome to go to the town website, and if you have questions, you can contact the clerk's office for clarification. What did I do? Lots of stuff. Attended the holiday kickoff with Counselor Parker, that was very nice, I mentioned that earlier. Mr. Locken did a great job with that. Santa was there, and horses pulling a little wagon around, it was very cool. Attended the Gulf Advisory Board, they are working on their rate schedule for next year. Had a meeting with the moderator of the RTM, the finance chair, and Mr. Byrd and I, just to catch up on some things. It was nice to keep the communication lines open. Attended the RTM meeting, Public Safety Committee, at the police station, which is a very informative meeting. Lots, lots of productive talk and discussion, and nice tour of the building for the RTM members. I had an email from Marion Galbraith of the Thames River Heritage Park, and she had heard that we were talking about getting the new senior center van with the grant, and I'm asking for Mr. Byrd to set an item for the agenda for after the new year to discuss possible disposition of that van, and inviting representatives of the Heritage Park in to discuss with us whether they'd be interested, whether it's worth their while, just to see if it's a fit or not, and various internal meetings. Clerk of the representative town meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. The next RTM meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, December 12th, 7:30 PM, at the Groton Senior Center.
And clerk of the council?
And it certainly bears repeating that, just a reminder that next week, one week from today, the 11th of December, is our referendum regarding the ordinance modifying the Groton 2020 Plan. To answer Counselor Obray, yes, all seven polling locations will be open from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And as the mayor stated, the sample ballot and the question explanatory text are available on the town's website, www.groton-ct.gov.
Thank you. I forgot to include the status report. Thanks to Fitch High School students and the Groton Town and City Police Departments for their Thanksgiving distribution of human services, and the December holiday distribution will be on December 21st. Conservation Commission has some vacancies, so if anyone's interested in that, they can contact the clerk's office as well. And the finance director provided, whether extensive updates for the council. And I think we're good. Did you have something else you wanted to go to now? No?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, so we are on to the town manager.
I attended the sector annual meeting last week, as well as many miscellaneous internal meetings. Other than that, I've been notified I have been appointed to the sector board, so I'll start that in a jay-ly.
Excellent. Any department heads or superintendent here to speak to us this evening? No, Mr. Zagami, no? Okay. Committee of the whole, I have nothing to report. Personnel, the point, Mr. Chairman Heath.
Nothing to report.
Temporary rules, Chairman Heath.
Nothing to report.
Regular rules?
Nothing to report.
And nothing on public safety, so we're on to Roman numeral 10, new business. We are on item 2018-493-1, I believe this is Counselor Franco. And we are on page 31, please.
I make a motion to adopt a resolution to approve the Groton Open Space Association's grant application to the Department of Energy. Wait a minute, I, yes, thank you. That's all right. I make a motion, I make a resolution endorsing Groton Open Space Association's application to the State of Connecticut Department of Environmental and Energy Protection's open space and watershed land acquisition grant program. Whereas the Groton Open Space Association has requested the Groton Town Council's endorsement of an application for grant funds to purchase 104 acres of property consisting of seven parcels of land with frontage on Fort Hill Road and Flanders Road currently owned by North Woods Financial LLC, now therefore be it. Resolve that the town council endorses Gosa's application to the State of Connecticut Department of Environmental and Energy Protection's open space and watershed land acquisition grant program for the 104-acre property fronting Fort Hill Road and Flanders Road. I so move.
Is there a second? Seconded, moved by Franco, seconded by Zepari. Is there any discussion on this item? Counselor Obray.
I would just note, I suppose where it says the Groton Town Council recommended approval of the grant, but it was not totally, I'm still in opposition.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of item 2018-493-1, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. So that is eight in favor, one opposed, Obray, and zero abstentions. Thank you. Counselor Heath, number 20, or 2018-521-1, approval of procurement policy and procedures on page 33.
I make a motion, resolution approving procurement and policy and procedures, whereas the Office of Management and Budget, OMB, has issued a new uniform guidance procurement standards which significantly changed procurement requirements related to the purchase of goods and services when using federal awards. And whereas the new regulations require a fully documented detailed policy and procedures for management of federal funds, and whereas the grace period is now ended and implementation is required as of July 1st, 2018, now therefore be it resolved that the town council approves the procurement policy and procedures for compliance with the Uniform Guidance Procurement Standards issued by the Office of Management and Budget, OMB, I so move.
Second.
Moved by Heath and seconded by Schmidt. Is there any discussion? Counselor Zepari, and then Obray.
When we discuss this in the council of the whole, it's generally a good idea, but we haven't seen the new procedures at all yet. We've seen an outline of how things should be changed, but we have not seen a policy that we're voting on. And that's a bit concerning. I am in favor of compliance with the OMB Uniform Guidance Procurement Standards, but I would like to see how we are going to comply.
Mr. Byrd?
My understanding was that that really was the policy being updated, but they're not going to update the procedures. You've seen the policy, just not some future, they're going to do some more work on other parts of it, they're just right now doing what has to be approved. But that was the policy.
Well, what I saw was a table with comparison of what was and what should be. I don't see anything that tells us what will be. And it's kind of like Christmas Carol. We've had the three ghosts, but I would like to see the duck on the table.
My understanding is the policy was in there from what I remember. I don't have, I don't know if it has been in this from last time or from that meeting, but I'll look it up. But it'll be a while before we do, we're going to do an exhaustive, you know, review of that, of those procedures and policy.
I'm with you in spirit. I just would like to see.
We have to get it in place, we really can't wait for this piece of it, but they're working on the rest, though.
I think the changes were noted in yellow.
Yes. The purchasing agent has prepared a procurement policy and procedure document as required, which needs approval by the council. The policy will be incorporated into the purchasing manual later. So the policy is completed, it's not fully into the purchasing manual yet. However, this needs to be adopted, it needed to be adopted in July, so we really need to, to move on this item. So Counselor Obray is next, and then Franco.
It has to be approved when?
According to our materials, July 1st of 2018.
Well, there was a, I had recommended that we make a change to the reference to Groton residents, and I haven't gotten anything saying that anything had been worked on with that, so.
That'll be in a totally separate, this policy, we're only changing the federal part right now, that's our policy, and you can't, we can't alter the wording on the federal piece of it. We're working on it. I reached out to CCM, I, they sent me about 12 other towns' policies. Eileen Cardillo has reached, our purchasing agent, has reached out to other towns. Cindy Landry reached out to find it. We're compiling all of what the other towns have, are doing, so that we can come back to you. We will be doing that. We will be bringing something, but that's a totally separate issue than the federal changes.
So just in addition to that, there was a line here that says, "The town elected to utilize the grace period pursuant to the federal OMB super circular, which makes this regulation effective July 1st." So we are within the grace period of the federal regulations.
I should have something soon, though, on the other piece. And that can be done totally separately.
So basically, what this is saying, I, I'm not, I'm reading it, and I'm not seeing what you're saying, but you're saying that this is federal regulation?
Yes.
How come it doesn't say? How come it doesn't say federal regulations?
That's what OMB is.
Yeah.
OMB is Federal Office of Management.
The federal circular requires it for a federal grant. We want to continue to, essentially, if we want to continue to receive federal grants, we have to adopt this language.
Are you set, or should I go on?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Councilor Franco?
So, from our committee of the whole meeting, where they're taking, let me just clarify if in my head it's cracked, they're taking the wording from the federal and just inserting it into the policies that are already there. So, that's it. They're not.
Not changing anything, only what's required.
Right. So, then, in the local, like what Leanne had proposed, this could be done on a later date?
Anytime, yeah. It could be done anytime. Just going to take us a while to compile everything and get a recommendation.
Oh, sure, sure.
I'll have it soon.
And it doesn't suit?
It's in progress.
So, the federal rules, was the part there that said for local vendors, was that a federal rule, or is that the local?
Yes, that's required language for the federal part. You can't have a local, and usually on state grants, you can't give a local preference on state and federal grants. You can only on what we purchase.
Right. So, this is only regarding the grant portion, not the actual full purchasing?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I will put, I will get that to you ASAP.
Well, that's okay. I just am not feeling terribly comfortable with how this is, but as long as everybody else is, that's fine. I just want to be sure that, you know, maybe we should, another time, say, "This is what the feds say, and we got to do, and do that," and have it separate.
That's what this is. That's this document they provided for us in the COW is what this is.
Yeah, but that's what we're going to be changing, though, some of that.
We had to adjust some of it.
I understand that.
This whole document that they gave us, the whole chart, is the federal uniform guidance procurement standards.
Right. But in there are things that we wanted to change that don't pertain to the federal part, but they gave us the whole thing together.
Right. But we can't, we can only change certain things. We can't change the federal things.
I understand that. Never mind.
When we rewrite it, we'll make it clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. All right. So, we are on, if there's no further discussion, we are voting on 2018-521-1, approval of procurement policy and procedures. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstention. Councilors Zeperry is abstaining, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, sir. We are on to 2018-506-1, National Recreation and Parks Grant, on page 35. 36 is where the resolution is. Councilor O'Bree, please.
36. Resolution authorizing the town manager to apply for and execute the National Parks and Recreation Grant for the Fit and Strong Program at the Senior Center. Whereas the Senior Center would apply for grant funds in the amount of $1,350 from the National Park and Recreation Association to institute the Fit and Strong Program at the Center, therefore be it resolved that the town manager or his designee is authorized to apply, execute, and receive the NRPA grant agreement. I so move.
Second.
Moved by O'Bree and seconded by Atwater. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none. All those in favor of 2018-506-1, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. So moved unanimously. We're on to 2018-528-1, Federal Transit Administration, Section 5310, program grant senior center, page 37. Councilor Atwater, please.
Resolution authorizing the town manager to enter an agreement slash contract for a Federal Transit Administration, Section 5310, grant on behalf of the town of Groton. Whereas the federal funds are available for the replacement of a Groton senior center van under the Federal Transit Administration, Section 5310, program, now therefore be it resolved that the town manager may execute all such reports and certifications as may here and after be required as a condition of receiving such capital assistance grant. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Atwater and seconded by Parker. Discussion on this item? And again, for the public, we do in-depth discussion during our committee of the whole. It's not like we're just rubber stamping things. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of 2018-528-1, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on to 2018-522-1, Way Finding Sign Master Plan 2018. This is on page 39. Councilor Schmidt, the resolution's on 40, please.
Whereas the completed Groton market analysis identified a need to improve placemaking and branding, and the Office of Planning and Development Services identified a need for improving wayfinding signage in Groton for branding purposes, as is commonly found in high-profile communities. And whereas Groton approached the need for a sign program in a comprehensive manner to best develop a plan addressing sign location, colors, text, placement, and design options. And whereas Groton developed an RFP, conducted interviews with qualified teams, and ultimately hired beta group to best complete a wayfinding master plan. And whereas Groton staff and other community members met frequently with beta to consider multiple concepts, options, and directions to best address Groton's needs. And whereas the developed wayfinding sign master plan provides a strong, detailed foundation from which Groton can strategically implement should future funding be allocated, now therefore be it resolved that the town of Groton, the town council hereby accepts the wayfinding sign master plan. I so move.
Moved by Schmidt and seconded by Heed. I just wanted to make a couple of statements before we vote. This was, there has been no money spent on this by this council. This was an item that was approved by prior councils. All we are doing is accepting the policy. It's a concept plan. We are not approving any funding at this time to take any action on the plan. Any discussion on the wayfinding? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight in favor, one opposed, Parker. Zero abstentions. Item 2018-381-1, Groton 2020 Plan Construction Goals, on page 41. The resolution is on 42. Councilors Zeperry, please.
Resolution setting labor goals for the Groton 2020 Plan School Construction Project. Whereas the town of Groton wishes to maximize the labor used from the town of Groton, as well as emphasizing use of minorities and veterans for the construction of the Groton 2020 Middle School and two elementary schools, now therefore be it resolved that the town council is setting the following project goals for laborers for the Groton 2020 School Construction Projects. 5% of the town of Groton according to the zip codes, 10% minorities, including women, and 5% veterans. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Zeperry and seconded by Schmidt. Any discussion? Councilor Franco?
I just want to put on the record that I still believe that these numbers are low, especially regarding the residents in the town of Groton, and I think we're missing an opportunity here to create more jobs for our residents that are local.
Any further discussion? Councilor Baumgartner?
I'd just like to align my remarks with Councilor Franco. I, you know, I think we're cognizant of the fact that the state does have a required set aside, and we certainly meet these percentages, but I think just given, you know, where our labor market is heading right now in terms of training programs associated with a big surge in manufacturing and the trades, I think we're really uniquely positioned to take advantage of those programs and potentially provide a pathway for young people to get apprenticeships and work on these schools. So, I think I share, you know, many of the concerns that Councilor Franco has, and I think, especially when it comes to veterans and minorities percentages we have, we could probably set a little higher amount, so I'll be opposing this.
The state, because this is a state-funded project, there are much higher requirements than this. It's 25% of the labor will be in the local labor market, so this is in addition to the 25% that the state mandates. Any further discussion?
Are we sure of that?
That's not how I believe it was explained.
I believe that's what the state statute says.
I thought it was a specific percent of the 25%.
No, it was in addition to.
In addition to. Any further discussion? We have been discussing this since May. Any other further discussion at this time? All those in favor of 2018-381-1, say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Six in favor, three opposed, Franco, Baumgartner, and O'Bree, and zero abstentions. 2018-501-1, Committee of the Whole, 2019 Regular Meeting Schedule, page 43. And I think we are back at Councilor Baumgartner?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the committee of the whole regular meeting schedule for 2019. So moved.
Second.
He doesn't need to read it, does he? Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Schmidt. All those in favor? Yes, I'm sorry.
I believed it Tuesday, December 17th, 2019, rather than 18th.
I don't know.
Is what?
He's correcting the, he's correcting the date. Mr. Clerk, do you see what we're referencing?
Councilor Atwater, it said it was, should be December 17th. Is that correct?
Yes, that is according to the calendar. It is the 17th, is the Tuesday of that week. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on.
Do I understand?
I'm sorry.
Do I understand that we changed that last date to Tuesday, December 17th?
Correct.
Tuesday is the 17th.
No, no, we were changing it.
It was just an error.
Changed the, changed the error, not the day.
We didn't make Wednesday the 18th. That's the only one, wanted to be clearer.
2018-501, Town Council, 2019 Regular Meeting Schedule. This is Councilor Parker, on page 45. 46 is the resolution, please.
Resolution approving 2019 Town Council Regular Meeting Schedule. Be it resolved that the town council approves the town council regular meeting schedule for 2019 as follows in our packet, except for Wednesday, January 2nd, 2019 is a special meeting because of, Tuesday's the holiday. And Wednesday, November 6th, 2019 is election, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Atwater.
And there's two corrections also.
Go ahead.
Tuesday, August 6th, 2018 should be changed to 19. And Tuesday, September 3rd, 2018 should be changed to 19.
Mr. Clerk, do you see the typo? Thank you. Good catch. Anything else?
It's the only part of the minutes I read.
Okay. All right. So, all those in favor of 2018-501, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. So moved unanimously. And we are on our last item, 2018-526-1, Town Property Sale Introduction, Setting the Public Hearing, on page 47. I believe we're at Councilor Franco's.
Resolution setting a public hearing on the sale of the town-owned property. Whereas the town of Groton is the owner of real property, PIN 260-819-714-055, commonly referred to as Noink School Public Gardens. And whereas the town was approached by Christopher Drake, the co-owner of neighboring property, to request a sale of a .168-acre portion of the Noink School Public Gardens property to him, now therefore be it resolved that the town council will hold a public hearing per state statute 7-163E for the sale of the real property owned by the town on Wednesday, January 2nd, 2019, at 6:30 p.m., and to direct the town clerk to publish the notice thereof twice per the referenced statute. And be it further resolved that the town council refers the sale of the town-owned property to the Planning Commission pursuant to CGS Section 8-24. I so move.
Second. Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. Discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We're on to item 11, Other Business. Many of the councilors have other business, or the manager. Councilor Heed?
We will have a personnel committee meeting next Tuesday at 5:30. Just want to make sure that's scheduled. And then, I'd like to make a referral to the Rules Committee. There's one or two corrections that we need to make to the rules, but if that could be postponed or held off until January because we have, what is it, the council meeting right after the COW on December 18th. So, we'll have personnel at 5:30, COW at 6:30. And so, we can do the rules in January.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Here, one second, please. Yes.
Didn't we agree that we would combine the 11th and the 26th meetings to the 18th?
Yes.
So, when Councilor Heed's the next Tuesday, that's the 11th.
The one after that. I'm the only one.
I just wanted to be clear on my mind. I must stick around dates.
That's good. Seeing no other business, is there a move to adjourn?
I make a motion.
Second.
Moved to adjourn by Parker, seconded by Atwater. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are adjourned at 7:58.